I'm gonna call the meeting order. It's the July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Belmont Clumby School District Board of Directors. Start off with, we'll call, please.
Michelle Murphy.
Here.
Ryan Meyer.
Here.
Sharon Barthma. Gary Berklin.
Here.
Rick McDaniel. Art Schlichting. Jim Swetson.
Here.
We have fairly a horn, but we do.
We do have one.
You're going to welcome visitors. We have some visitors from our cross-country teams that want to talk. And even though they're not all gonna talk, I beg your devil's support for them once you talk. So, Haylen, if you would like to start off, that would be very.
Hi, my name's Kieran Morris. I'm here tonight representing the high school girls' cross-country team, as well as my teammates, Jennifer Beautiful, Lyle Schlichting, and I have the support of my other teammates, Lily Aguilera and Clementine Seifert, who had other obligations to be at tonight. A merger between Belmont Clumby and Claremont Field House would not benefit the Belmont Clumby female athletes. In fact, it would set us back, as Claremont has no female athletes spring over, so we are getting no additional runners or a minimum of very few, and yet we would be going up two classes to run against. If you come watch sports as a spectator, you look at the program and you see a very common theme of student names. In almost every sport, there are the same core group of athletes and then add one or two or subtract one or two names. At bigger schools, students have to compete at four spots on those teams, some students never making it at all. Every female cross-country team member plays two to four sports representing Belmont Clumby. Their day starts at around six-thirty a.m. and ends at as late as midnight during some seasons that have long bus rides. There isn't enough time in the day to compete in the in-season sport, do weight training and any other arts programs, and then get a three-to-five mile run in to be as competitive as someone who runs year-round at a larger school and whose focus is only cross-country and track. It's pretty simple. There's not enough resources of time, energy, or population to do that in a one-day school. The three-a schools' populations range with three hundred and four students being the smallest and seven hundred and twenty-one students being the largest from last year's records. We only have one hundred and seventy-nine students. That's a one-hundred-and-twenty-six student difference from the smallest three-a school. That's a little less than half and a four times smaller than the largest school. On top of that, in state cross-country meet last year, the fastest one-a girls' time was eighteen minutes and thirty-nine seconds, and the fastest three-a time was sixteen minutes and forty-eight seconds. We cannot compete with that. It will be setting us up for automatic failure. Merging would greatly reduce the possibility of our athletes having a bid to state, or even more so would all but eliminate the opportunity to see success there. We cannot compete with girls whose only sport is cross-country. As the starting varsity softball pitcher, I could easily say I'm only gonna do softball. But if I did that, it would be letting all my other teammates across other sports down because of our numbers. I had the slowest race times of the entire cross-country team last year, but my score mattered because without me, we only had four other athletes and none that didn't qualify for a team score. Not long ago, Claremont did not want to merge the wrestling program on, and one of the reasons they didn't want to was because they didn't wanna jump classes. The same is true, but the shoe falls on the other foot. If dissolving Claremont's program means we won't go to three-a, then we welcome them with open arms. But if it means we have to move to three-a, we would prefer standalone. I ask you tonight to do what is in the best interest of the student athletes you represent at Belmont Clumby. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Kieran? Thank you. Any other visitors speak their communications? All right. I'd like to welcome our new interim superintendent, Chris Bergman. If you haven't met her yet, I encourage you to stop in the office or wherever you see her and take some time to talk to her. She's gonna be with us for the next year, and so far, she's off to a great start, and I think that will continue. Okay, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. The amendments are on the sheet that was handed to us separately with one resignation, two resignations, and then one, two, three, five coaches that are being appointed.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Okay, on to the consent items. I need a motion to approve the consent items.
There's only three of us. I'll move. Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Okay, on to reports. School Improvement, ISAS testing for secondary school. Are you doing that okay?
No, Marcus.
Marcus is gonna do it. I love it.
I was trying. Why, yes, I'm going to do that.
Just joshing.
I thought maybe you'd find somebody that you could twist their arm.
Oh, look at all these kids.
You said one whole no over there.
Probably tech sports are.
Okay.
Beautiful city. What city is it? I can't. Oh, you did? I couldn't. So far, I haven't seen anything.
I'm gonna move up here.
Here we go.
All right. Can I have a little out of breath? Okay, so what I have is our assessment data from ISAS and from FAS that I'm gonna share. This shows the overall proficiencies for math and ELA. We do not have the writing back as of the time that we did this. So overall, percent proficient is what you see here. So seventh and eighth grade together, ELA was fifty-nine percent proficient. Math was fifty-two percent proficient. Nine through eleven, sixty-five percent proficient. ELA, sixty-three in math, and then seven, the whole group, seven through eleven, English language. Arts was sixty-three percent and fifty-nine percent in math. So, as you know, we try and, our whole goal is the eighty percent proficient. That's what we want, so we have some work to do. We were assigned as a, help me out, ESU, not ESU.
Oh, yeah.
ESU, yes. ESU School.
Needs improvement.
We were needs improvement in special ed and English, our L students. So we have written plans and we're gonna work on that this year, so hopefully that will improve these scores coming up in the future. If you look here, this just splits it out, each individual grade. As you notice, eighth and tenth grade as well take science. That's, I don't know, some of these are not pretty, I'll just be honest. We all know that it's a one, everybody always says, well, it's a one snapshot, it's this, 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 but that's, this is what the state looks at. So we really need to work on something. That has to do with part of working with our standards, trying to do our standards-based learning, whether learning the standards, and that's what we're focusing on. So, grade-like comparisons, this will compare the last three years. If I have the data for the last three years, so like the class of twenty twenty-four, which is gonna be our seniors, when they were eleventh graders, and then when they had ninth grade, as you can tell. When they were ninth graders, ELA was seventy-two percent. Last year was fifty-one percent, or the year after that is fifty-one percent, and then last year was fifty-six percent. So I don't know what happened here. Then if you look at the math side, you have your forty-six percent in math, the thirty-four, when they were tenth graders, and then this last year, they were at fifty-nine percent. So they grew. So it just, again, determines that. So, and declares the class of twenty twenty-five are juniors. This is coming up here, juniors. You're sixty-five. I don't wanna read through all these, you all can read.
Can you, the ones of, those last ones you have twenty-three, I can't see those. Oh, so there's seventy-four, fifty-four, sixty-five. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
I can't make it figure it out. I don't make it figure it out.
You're fine.
Now, this is gonna get really small.
Test my vision. Test my vision.
This is really small. So if you look at, this is twenty twenty-six, that'd be our this year's sophomores. So when they were seventh graders, they were sixty-six percent, seventy-five percent, sixty-nine, so they're kinda staying in the same area. Math was sixty-two, sixty-six, sixty-eight, so they are growing in the math part. The ninth freshman this year went from seventy-nine to fifty-six to sixty-four. So we're really fluctuating there. And then in math, they went sixty-seven, forty-four, sixty-two percent proficient. So, I don't know. And then the, our eighth graders this year, I just had sixth grade, when they were sixth graders, they were seventy-four percent, and then this year, they were seventy, or fifty-five percent in ELA. In math, they were fifty-two percent and then forty-three percent. So there's some work that needs to be done. I'm not gonna surecoat it or anything like that. We just have some things that we need to work on. And then this is the AMATH and the AMATH FAS test data. That means that's the test that we give, and three times a year, we give it in the fall, this winter, and the spring to seventh through eleventh graders. This is what Mark showed you a few months ago, I believe. So this is, this shows you seventh grade. Above the line, these are your proficiencies, and these are your non-proficient. Below the line, so, and then it goes, this is your spring score, your winter, no, I'm sorry, your fall score, your winter score, and your spring score. So we went down five from, from the fall, for the eighth grade, for the seventh grade, excuse me. The eighth grade went up one percent, and the ninth grade went down five percent. This is the math. But if you look here, like this one is, I mean, we're at least a little bit higher. We had seventy percent proficient, sixty-six, sixty-five, so they're a little bit closer to that eighty mark that we want. Tenth grade went down one percent proficient. They stayed fifty-nine, fifty-nine, and fifty-eight percent proficient. So, but again, we need to. And then eleventh grade was fifty-one percent, fifty-two percent, and then fifty-two. So they went up one from the fall in the AMATH. This is reading. The seventh grade went down eight percent from the fall to the spring, from sixty-four to fifty-six. Eighth grade went down fourteen percent, from fifty-five to forty-one. And ninth grade went from seventy-seven to sixty-five, so they went down twelve percent. So I don't know if, one thing we need to do is really focus on the importance of the tests. You know, teachers making sure kids know how important these tests are, that we look at this, that we need to try our best on it. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. You know the answer? Oh, I thought maybe that's what it should be. Did you do all the answers? Yeah, I think that's a little bit of what it is, so.
You see the grades. Is this reflected on the grades of the classes?
Overall, they're like classroom grades?
Yeah. Like I said, is this not a good test? Is this, because like I said, if I know a test doesn't mean anything, I'm gonna zip through it, get out of here.
Right.
They're not taking it seriously, and it's not an accurate reflection of what's going on.
I would say it's not as accurate as it could, as really what it could be, but we do have a lot of, I'll be honest, we have a lot of kids on the failing list every week.
So that is, the grades aren't there, so it does match the data you have here.
Yes, somewhere, yes. And again, we have to remember, this has all of our special ed kids, all of our five oh four kids, and all of our L kids mixed in as well. And we were, we were targeted in the Ls and the special ed last year for ESU. You know, so all this is all added together. I could dig a little deeper and probably do it in subgroups, where I could pull out the special ed, and I could pull out the L students, and I could pull out five oh four students and see if that makes a difference. But overall, I think it's not quite, I mean, we, we do better in the classroom with grades, better than what this is showing us, but we still have quite a failing list every week. We really do. Okay. That is the end of that. Any questions? What questions we have about that? We're working. We're trying. What it's gonna take.
So the data that Callie and James are keeping track of every week.
The screener, yeah.
The screener, so that plays into this as well.
Yes, yes. It's on there, and we talked about it, and we are gonna have a day with the AEA at the beginning of the, one of our pre-service days, where they're gonna come in and we're gonna really look at, evaluate this data. ISAS, we can dig a little deeper into, because they can break it down into categories, like in the English language arts, like maybe it's analogies, maybe it's, help me out, what else? I don't know. Punctuation or something like that. We can really look at that and see if that's, is that something that we're seeing in everybody that we really need to focus on in the classroom? Like I said, the writing hasn't come out yet, so that'd be something that we wanted to dig into, too. So this is.
I understand, it's new, as long as we have used the data to use it to improve things.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what, that's what we're gonna focus on, and like I said, I think you don't wanna be a targeted school, but at the same time, it makes you wake up and really look at things, you know? We don't wanna be on that list of that, but I don't know, it's not all bad. Because otherwise, what if we sat and really made a plan out and decided all these things? Probably not. Okay, so this one, I didn't put on the, on the slideshow. This is the Conditions of Learning Survey. This is what we're required to give every year to all students, six through twelve. Would you like me? The reason I gave you the hard copy is because actually it breaks it down a little bit more, and you can see the actual questions that they asked and how we actually were rated. It's very, it's quite interesting to me. And again, I think this is something that we need to focus a little bit more on, instead of just saying, here, take this survey. I think that's, otherwise, and then we need to take a little more time. If each question maybe, say, if maybe we read the questions aloud to them and let them answer the way that it should be. But this is, like I said, given to, I don't know, what grades do you give Conditions of Learning to?
Third through sixth.
Okay, so third, it's actually a third through eleventh grade survey that we give. This is just six through twelve grade results. Adult-student relationship, twenty-three percent feel that, feel good about that. That's down five from last year. Boundaries and expectations, again, it gives you more of an explanation as to what that means. That's why I gave you the hard copy, so you can look at it. Maybe you wanna look a little more into it, and we can have another discussion next month about it. But it's something we need to focus on as well. We got a lot to focus on, I think. A lot to work on. But we can do it. We have a good group of kids, we have a good group of teachers. If we all do it together and work together, we can make it look better. This is something that will be on the school report card, this information here. So we will get more, you know, they'll rate us on how these things showed up and give us a score from that, this as well as the ISAS scores. They'll give us a report on that, so. Questions?
Thank you for the separation. We, all of us.
Sure, and if there's more that you want on ISAS, I can pull out lots of reports for ISAS. And there's lots of things that, that we can look at, and we're gonna dig, like I said, dig more into it. Those first in-service days. And then AEA is real good about knowing, I mean, they know the details and they know a lot more information than what we do as just general educators.
We think you did a little bit right before this, about how we can share our action, how we see our action. And bringing that back and sharing what that really looks like and how we're, which data we're honing in on specifically and what construction we might manage that, so.
And I think, I don't think we've shared the ESU plan, have we? Have you shared your ESU plan? Maybe that's something I get ready for next month, that we can show you, that what we have come up with and how we're going to proceed through that. It was something we reported to the state, we gave to the state, so, and it's been approved. So I'll bring it and share that with you next month.
One exciting thing is that the Bell's for your principal's report, so that's next up, and you're already there. And I know Mark's gonna make you go first, so.
I will. So I might as well just do it while I'm here, right?
That's right.
Ladies first.
Yeah. We don't need that. Just a few things, it's been pretty quiet because I haven't been around a whole lot, so that's kinda nice. Everybody needs a little downtime. Buildings coming along, they're getting things done. The cleaning up and rearranging and the painting and all that kinda stuff, which looks good. Baseball, softball concluded, softball made it to the second round. And actually, they got beat by the team that's playing in the finals tonight, so.
That's all right.
Oh, third of four, I thought they were in the final, but it doesn't matter. So they did, they had a really, really good season, and baseball had some wins, so that was good. Now we're getting ready for fall sports. That'll start August seventh. Hopefully, good numbers in volleyball, football, and cross-country. The free lunches, Kim's been serving, she said that they served eight hundred and ten in June, and so far this month, they've served three hundred and twenty-six. So down a little bit from what they're used to. They average about thirty-six a day to come. So if you know of any kids, one-year-old to eighteen-years-old, from eleven to twelve fifteen at the elementary cafeteria, they eat. It's free, if an adult wants to go with them, I believe it was four dollars and fifty cents or something for them to eat, so. But we're starting to get things ready for beginning of the school year, which will be here before we know it. We're all going to the SAI conference on first of August, second of August. So we hopefully will learn some good things there and bring it back. But that's all I have for now. Anybody questions?
Enjoy your last week, so.
Oh, yes, yes. I have an east of spring twenty-one, so we're going to Kansas City. What's that gonna be like?
Gross, it'll be so fun.
It will be fun. It'll be a lot of fun, so.
Should be warm.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Your turn, Mark.
Okay.
It's a hard act to follow.
Yeah, I know.
Want my chair?
Want.
Oh, yours.
Yeah, it's nice and warm.
You're right.
Okay, let's see, if I can. I'm out of practice, too. Plus, I've succumbed to old age. Wearing. Okay, I always leave this for my staff to look at, because then they can give me a hard time about how many windows I look at my computer any one time. Then I hide it, so they can. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna cover the FAS test, because we had done that earlier this spring. Our kids take the ISAS in grades three through six in our building. So third graders take it for the first time, so there's no comparison to what they might have done in the past. And then obviously, the next three grades have some comparison. So in our third grade, we had sixty percent were proficient, and they have a subcategory of advanced within that, so we had one student in that group that was advanced, and then forty percent that were not yet proficient. Reading, and I will tell you, we've known this since we came back. This is our, these are our COVID kids that started out, they took kindergarten, you know, with missing three months of kindergarten with COVID, and then, and they have struggled with reading, not so much with math, but it's been a reading thing. We truly believe that what we're doing is gonna get them caught up, but it is disappointing, because it is, it's a struggle for that group. And one of my girls is in third grade last year, so I get it. So it's, it is what it is. We're no different than any other district, though, so it's really no different. Our fourth grade math, much better. Again, we've got like four students that are advanced in that group, which is nice. Reading, again, bit of a struggle. And fifth grade math, again, pretty good. And the advanced part is really nice, and those of you that have been on the board a while know that when I first came, I was really almost flabbergasted, because we had almost no kids in the top five percent. But almost every year now, we have two or three kids that are ready for advanced learning. Seventy percent in fifth grade, good readers. Math, not quite so much. And then sixth grade, good numbers. And again, I'd say that despite, I think the high school is different. Our FAS scores align pretty well with our ISAS scores. It's a, we get a pretty good gauge between those two of what kids are doing. And between the daily stuff that our teachers do and the weekly stuff, assessments plus the FAS scores plus ISAS, we have a pretty good idea where our kids are missing. And the reading skills for an upper-grade kid, we know there's some inferences and things like that that are tough skills to learn. You can read a paragraph, and kids can read it aloud, they can read it, then you ask them what it means or who the main character are, characters are, that's a struggle sometimes. So that's something we're really working hard on. Conditions of Learning Survey, those of you that were on the board before know that we were not very happy with our survey scores last year. I'm happy to say that we're much, we had much better results this year. And again, just like anything else, any grade level we have, we have anywhere between forty-five and fifty-five kids. That's a very small sample for any kind of measurement, and every grade is very, very different from another. And all it takes is for two or three kids to be either gone or move away, or different kids move in, so it can affect that. But this is something we're pretty proud of. Adult-student relationships, which they explain, this is from their website, from their Conditions of Learning website. The students still connected to and supported by adults. Eighty percent reported the favorable adult-student relationships, which is average in our Central Rivers ADA. Boundaries and expectations, and those of you that know a little bit about our PBS, PBIS, know that we really get hard the expectations and the boundaries and clarification of school rules and expectations. So we actually did quite a bit better than the average in the state and the ADA. We think we really pushed that hard with kids knowing what the expectations are. And this is good news, bad news. Our third and fifth graders, only about twenty-two percent felt safe from other students, from verbal abuse, teasing, and exclusion, so not physical safety, but more emotional. But we're actually better than the state average, because that's, so that's a struggle. I think that's, that's a really a sign of where our population is, not just our kids, but our society. Student-student relationships, again, this is a little bit down from the past, but we're still in the range of kids get along for the most part at this grade level and can respect each other. And then safety, again, we're right in the middle here, right? Where the safety of our students feel while they're at school. Sixth grade, and again, this is kinda the group that has hurt us in the past in terms of our score. Even though our score's a little bit lower than the average, they're way higher than they were last year. Again, same kinda questions. So our sixth grade students take the same survey that seven through twelve take. So it's a little bit different answers and questions that they answer than the third and fifth graders. And that, that's just because we have sixth graders in our building. So they take the test that every other sixth grader in this state takes. Generally feel like adults and students, or adults are connected and supported with them, not nearly as high as the younger kids, as you can see, but still pretty close to average. Boundaries and expectations, again, are pretty clear, on par with the state. This is not, this is not a good score. What's interesting about this is, when you break it down, the female, the females in our building are like sixty percent. They feel like they're really safe. It was the males that were unsafe among their, I think it's among their peers. Some, some boys feel like other boys are, you know, physically unsafe around them. It was eleven percent of boys felt that they were safe on school grounds, and about sixty percent of girls. So the average is twenty-four, but it was, that's kinda, that's concerning. That's something we're gonna absolutely talk about. Student-student relationships is somewhat less than average. The thing that's concerning to me about this is that, for the very first time since I've been here, our standing students, our students at college felt like they were not respected and cared for by their peers. There, it was the first time there's been a difference between our white kids and our non-white kids, for the very first time. And it was a significant difference. And that was disappointing, because like, that's something we're gonna talk to parents about, you know, as the year goes on. And this is, again, concerning. Four percent felt like they're emotionally safe at school. Where's these data? And that may be an anomaly for that group, who knows? We just, we don't know. So there's some things to work on. Like I said, most of the scores were much better than last year. And I expect our report card will reflect that. We have an ESU plan for our building as well. It's only for, or the focus is for special education. That's the one area we get dinged at. We didn't get dinged for EL, English Language Learners, but we are, we need to make some growth in special ed. Our focus is gonna be on. Our focus is going to be on math, reading and then social, emotional. This is the part that we need to get better. So that's all for that. Any questions for me about any of those? Again, I'd be glad if you'd like, I can share that, can share the printout, share that with anybody would like to see that.
Do you see these numbers reflected in the day-to-day, at the school, in the day-to-day dealings with the kids? Do you see those numbers reflected?
Yeah, I think that's consistent. I, one thing we did do this year, which we had not done in the past, is I asked the teachers to break the kids into smaller groups when they did this survey. So the teacher was really right by them when they took it. They would do it in groups of like five or six. So she could, he or she could walk around and make sure that they weren't just clicking through and not answering the questions. And that seemed to help, I think, in terms of the presentation. I actually did most of the sixth graders myself in the conference room, just had them just sit there and do it on their own. But they, so they knew it was important, they knew I thought it was something that they took seriously. But I think that helped just going, because they give you the questions ahead of time, it's not a secret. You know, they can tell you what they are and so you can share those. But where was I going with this? So I do think, I think it's consistent. We certainly see more behaviors at the sixth grade level. I think that's the nature of whatever you're in a building of elementary kids, whoever the oldest kids are, are probably going to give you the most difficult, whether it's fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, I don't think it really matters. I don't think it's a matter of sixth grade being difficult versus fifth grade. It's just they're the oldest in the building and that every year it seems like that's where I get the most referrals in terms of conflicts. And, you know, again, one of the great things about Belmont is, you know, if you have kids who get to know each other, they have great relationships, but they also then can form toxic relationships too. And they, there's really no way to avoid that when there's only fifty kids in a class. You know, if there's three girls, they date this other group of three girls or three boys, you know, it's, you can't keep them apart. It's, you know, they're always, you know, it's just part of the deal. So, but I think, I think we're getting better. And like I said, the one, that was a concern this year, that I didn't see that in our day-to-day work, that our young kids were feeling like they were not being appreciated by their peers. So that's something we're definitely going to keep looking at this year. That, that was not reflected in the data that I, that I saw in our referrals and stuff.
How many years we've been doing this?
The report card started, I think, the year, my first year. So the survey, we did the conditions of learning survey that first year. They did not do it for two straight years, right in the middle of that though. So the, the end of twenty twenty, they did not do it because we were in the school and they didn't update it in twenty twenty-one. So twenty twenty-two is the first, the next year we did it. So we've done four since I've been here out of six.
To be looking at this data, I think, they didn't do it when we were in school. I know they didn't do it when you guys were in school. As far as to compare, this is something sixth graders go through. I mean, I'm not trying to play it off, I'm not trying to downplay it at all.
No, I get that.
But I mean, as far as being able to analyze it properly, I don't know.
I don't have an answer. I do think that when I talk to my peers who have students in fourth grade as their last year, students in the fifth grade, they have, always have the same concern, that wherever the oldest group is, they tend to be, there's a tendency toward concerns, you know, in terms of they're just ready to be done and move on to high school. They think there's a big throw on their.
Their lives are changed.
Their lives are changing, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a lot more going on there.
So in terms of updates, the rooms are all clean. We're waiting on carpet in our, eight of our classrooms that are going to be recarpeted. Their carpet's torn out, but the new carpet's not in, so I'm hoping that that's going to change. Because I've got teachers calling me saying, can I get my room now? And I say, well, you could have had carpet, but you can't. So all my new teachers have checked in, have been in their classrooms or kind of stuff, where they're ready to go. We have a couple of student teachers this fall that have checked in, are going to be working with Ms. Hogan and Ms. Schultz. We're going to do something different. It's going to be in the news. We're going to announce it on the Facebook page and I'm sending a letter to all the parents. But in the, in the past, the first day of school has been just parent-teacher conferences where they set up ten-minute conferences all day long. Both parents and teachers felt like that was not a productive use of time. So we're going to do that in the form of an open house the day before. So the afternoon of the twenty-second, parents can come, they can take selfies, take their picture with Buddy, they can meet their teachers, drop off their supplies. And then on the twenty-third, we're just going to have a regular day of school. We're just going to start at the ground running and go. I think that's going to be a good way to start. I'm also going to do, in reflection to this data that we got, I'm going to invite parents to come and do a open mic with me, both before and after that three to five time. So if they want to come ask questions, we'll talk about some of this data, some of the expectations, just in case parents have any questions. And certainly can't make it mandatory, but I'm encouraging them to come because we get a lot of questions at the beginning of the year. And it's like we haven't always had time to adequately address that. So we'll see if parents want to come and listen and hear and do that. Otherwise, it's been pretty quiet in our building, other than the cleaning. So we're ready to go, though.
Thank you. Any questions for?
No.
Well, just observation. What I've observed tonight in these reports is, is very problematic. It's concerning that the students that we have that are going through our system right now either are facing different kinds of issues or problems than I expected them to or they're just not grasping or being given the tools to learn. Maybe they don't want to learn. Maybe the teachers aren't doing the job. I have no idea what the issues are. But I think that we deserve to do better by our students than we're giving at the moment. Simple as that.
I agree.
I agree.
Anything else?
So I think it would be nice if we could go back in time and have these tests thirty years ago. What were the results then compared to now? Didn't we have this thirty years ago?
Ask your action. Governor Brian said about that. Because he basically, not basically, he said it in a group of people who will never look back, will always look ahead. Everything I know was in the past. Everything I know today is in the past.
Well, that's how you learn.
That's right.
Now that you guys are talking, I'm getting ready to go to my class reunion. A really, really high number. And I've been thinking about the time I had in school. And it was some of the most rewarding and enjoyable time of my life through college, you know, through college in there too. I had wonderful staff, people that worked with me. I had great friends. And frankly, you can't, you can't tell me that you can get sixty-five percent of your classmates, some of whom are already dead, to show up at a class reunion in Emmitsburg, Iowa, but for the fact that we loved each other and we really had a good time together. And it was a good time. And, and, and all of us have been very successful, you know, in whatever career or occupation. I have a good friend who was a plumber, who's retired, of course. I, we all had different skill levels and, and achievement and just, you know, dreams. But we've all been really fortunate. And I'm not sure that we're providing that for these kids at this moment. That's my frustration. That's it.
Brian, we did take these tests. We just, they analyzed it like they do now. We took Iowa basic.
But they never asked me if I felt safe in my classroom.
Well, no, not those questions.
Does my teacher hate me? I mean, you know.
You know, that kind of stuff. How do you analyze that with no past? It's a changing world.
It is. But I look back on my time at school and I've told numerous people this, I went to school on Monday to find Friday night. It's not lying, everybody. That's what I did. But I had the good fortune of having teachers that recognized what my capabilities were and they funneled me within this school, this, this school here. They funneled me into places that I could excel. I mean, I had teachers come in and say, you want to change oil in my car at that, that study hall? You bet, you know? And I went over to the shop and changed their oil. There's people that recognize where I was going to be and they helped with that. And I appreciate that very much, you know? But I did just find Brian. Why nobody about that?
All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
I'm actually going to make a quick comment on, on what I've heard. The conditions for learning has been around about six years, so we do have some of that baseline. I think one thing that will be really important as we look at this data, that although it's a snapshot on one day, how do you take and frame those, but we know what the questions are. Like, how, how do we get insights from our students and, and talk about what does that look like? And sound like, feel like from day to day? And then dig into what actions can help us inspirally that in? So they're not just taking that survey on one day. But we know that they understand what those questions are as well because that, that could be a piece of it. We definitely, with the academic assessment piece, will be really delving into that decipherated data and trying to tie that as, as much as we can with that instruction. And I know Mark, we were talking about, Meg asked about science of reading and some letters training and a few of the teachers have had that. And what does that look like on a broader spectrum to make systemic change? I think the other piece to that is let's talk to our kids about this data a little bit more and get their insights. We had some amazing students here that have the courage to come and, and be advocates tonight and give us their, you know, their insights. So I think that just having those conversations, I think Mark, I think was standing to, we already talked about how that might look at his building. So I have complete faith that our, our teachers, our administrators, we're going to have a good, solid plan to bring back on, on how we're, how we're really doing this and doing everything we can for the group. So that would be, that would be my quick assessment on that. In terms of communication, I have been receiving such a warm welcome here. I have community members, I have students, lots of people, so I'm very thankful for that and I'm very happy to be here. In terms of our board agenda, just so you know, we're going to add a placeholder that every time our school business office can do some sharing. So tonight, Teresa will be covering a few things a little bit later. In terms of our personnel, our new transportation director, Brandon Allen, we already got him connected to some learning at the IPTA, which is Iowa People Transportation Association Learning. We did that this week. We're also, today I had an opportunity to visit with the representative from Bluebird, Bussing. And he'll be going to some more learning August second in Waterloo. So I appreciate his willingness and eagerness to learn and grow and try to help him get ready to go. We're still looking for an elementary night custodian and some paraeducators, but our principals tonight told me that they have some, maybe some people that have applied, so we're excited about that. Professional learning this week, do a lot with school finance, has a good review. You can always learn and grow in that area. And I'll again let Teresa talk about some of the things that are on my, my written page here. Just wanted to talk a little bit about some of our plans to attend possibly this flip, which is where you can dive into your specific budget with a lot of experts in the room to help answer questions and to talk you through some of that. Preschool planning, Mark's been proactive. I was just able to get some of that information tonight. So as far as current data for our three-year-olds and four-year-olds, I think he has only one family that has decided since the last enrollment conversation that they have, they're taking a different option and he's waiting to hear back from four. But other than that, our numbers remain the same, so we're excited to serve our preschool students. Cory's given me a great report on just their, their chipping away at all the things over the summer. And you've heard about the carpet, that'll, that'll be coming. So he's doing a great job. I would say down at that upcoming calendar of events that's listed, I would just highlight a few extra things. One being, I did attend the Belmont Growth Alliance meeting and visited kind of it and listened to all the great celebrations that are happening in Belmont. Everything from fireworks to the, just the fall festival and some upcoming things. But really talked to them about conversations CK and I had about work-based learning. And I'm excited to meet our work-based learning coordinator. I know there's already great things happening. But how can we maybe take advantage of some of the internships and extramissions? Maybe some of the state programs with registered apprenticeships? There's some money sitting there for not only employers' tents. And then I was able to catch a little bit of Envision Iowa with Iowa Economic Development and tying that together with how we can get our kids more involved with, with some of the programs that are here in the state. Trying to think if there's anything other than, other than that. I guess tonight, I would encourage you as we consider later choosing that November date for our meeting, considering that just when the election is, as far as having as much time as possible so that we can have any, if there's, you know, new board members to the IASB conference. So just being mindful that this conference is November fifteenth and we have elections when might our board meeting be? So those, those are the main items. And I guess I feel good about the conversations I met with our principals today for two and a half plus hours. And meeting again with one of them tomorrow. And we, we're going to get after this data and give them any time for them and help our teachers. They're doing great things. Any questions?
Did you find a place to stay?
I do. I have a place that I should be moving in at the end of next week.
Okay.
So thank you. And I've had lots of people helping with that, so thank the community for that.
Any other questions or comments? Or comments?
Yes.
Good, sure.
We've been reading back to our, our kids and stuff and how we as society and Brian brought that up. We create, created a quidmire. When I was in high school, there was at least ten restaurants. There was twelve-plus gas stations. A kid could go to work, he could get a part-time job. Today, there's one place, it's Fairway. They can't, they can't absorb all that. You know, this is one of the huge changes that we've seen over the past fifty years. And, I mean, I went from one job and had another one in thirty minutes. You know, and we could do that.
I'm a hundred percent with you on the fact that we need to look at some of our other businesses and get creative as well. For example, we were talking about the marketing opportunities at our meeting. You know, how do we find kids and match that interest and give an internship with someone in, in marketing? The hospital, we have a major employer in town, talking about what does that look like? Everything from, you know, lab tech, med tech, whatever their needs are. But I think we do need to keep connecting with all of our businesses and, and finding kids strengths and passions and doing everything we can to match that up. Yeah, thank you for that.
Anything else? Okay, towards the school business office report. See it up here.
Get some help with that?
Maybe, I might. Okay, so July is always busy. It's, pretty much everything from the whole year is coming together for us. So we really do, we, me and Belmont McKenna and myself, try to stay organized throughout the year so that when July hits, we're ready to go and we, we kind of kick off running there. We're working on year end, trying to prepare for the annual audit. We will continue to receive things that go back to June for the next month and a half. So we'll still have some invoices come in, some cash receipts that come in. So when you look at the financial statements that are in your board book today, those are preliminary, which is nothing new. We always do that in July, but at least gives you an idea of where we are right now. We have received our audit engagement letter, so now we can get field work scheduled. We do that in August. I always try to get that done before the Labor Day weekend. It's just a nice thing to have off the plate before then. Also in your bills tonight, you do have the final payments for the special ed classroom and for the high school addition. and for the high school addition and renovations that all happened. So that is just wonderful to be nearing the end of that project. Just as an FYI, we're asking you to approve those payments, but we're actually going to hold them just a little bit. They have just a few things that are still undone, nothing major. But Ed, who we had been working with, has fully retired now from the architectural firm we're working with. But I did reach out to Gary, who has taken over Ed's projects. He's going to get with the contractor, make sure those last few pieces are done, complete, and then we'll put those checks in the mail. So we are obviously hoping that's within the next week or two, or we would have just held on to those payments. Let's see here. So the big thing I'm really looking for from the board tonight, and it's the first action item you have, is we really do need to set what that pebble rate is going to be for the voter pebble so that we can get that established. We have some documents, then a resolution that need to be put together. It's a funding source for 10 years, so it's really important that all the language be correct. So after we have that rate, we'll run it by legal, make sure that everything is exactly as it needs to be, and then we'll bring that back for you to approve the resolution next month. And that's really kind of about it. We're also, I guess we're gearing up for election season too. We have five of our seven board members are up for reelection in November. So we're expecting we'll probably have more questions than normal on just what that looks like and how, just what to do. Kind of step one, two, three. So we are already for all of the eager people who will want to volunteer all that time. Did you have any questions?
Which districts are not up?
Which ones are not up? Gary's at large and Rick's, and I think his district number changed. Because I believe yours overlaps. Is that right? Oh, I think, I'm pretty sure that yours and Rick's are in the same spot, and his is not.
District two.
Yes, yours are also in the same district now. Rick was delayed for work, but would like to join us for the rest of the meeting on the phone. No one has any objections to that? Hi, Rick, I'm going to put you on speakerphone so you can join in on the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're just starting with action items, we're renewing the voted pebble.
Yes.
Do you have some background you want to give on that?
I didn't have anything additional to what I sent out and what's here.
Teresa, did you have anything additional to? I think my information you have in there, I did just, I sent a couple examples out of what that means as far as dollars are concerned.
I would like to propose something for the pebble. I think that we've been at the .67 for our time. The maximum that we can ask the voter to approve would be 1.33. We can go higher than that, but my recommendation is that we have to keep in mind that all of the nice buildings that we have are going to continually need more and more upgrade and repair and maintenance. And we no longer have the debt to pay off on Jacobson. So that means the tax levy has gone down and will continue to stay down. I would recommend that we go to 1.00 pebble levy to be voted on by the voter set the next to the regular school district election.
Did you hear that, Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
1.00%.
Is that a motion?
Okay, second that, okay. Do you want to have any discussion about it?
What does that translate to? Because we're at 67 cents.
What would a dollar do, Teresa?
So a dollar, if we had had a $1 levy in the current year, that would be $354,000.
That isn't a ton of money, but.
So the current year, what we have is 237,000.
Enough, I mean, that'd be feasible.
Yes, so we use. We use the pebble dollars in conjunction with the save dollars. So between both funds, that would give us a good position to be able to keep up. And it's not just the buildings, the buildings, of course, are huge. But those dollars are the same ones that we also use for technology, for leases, for, I mean, geez, we. We're using it, it's very important that we keep it at least where it is, if not increase it.
Well, I think that's approved as well.
Yeah, I think it's not the maximum, I think it's reasonable for the taxpayer. What I'm thinking about is the taxpayer, but also the needs of the school district in them. And I think it's a good balance between the two.
I do, and the community has always been good helpers.
They want us to have good facilities and.
I think that's a good give back.
And I'll add to what Teresa said, I'll just read it right off the sheet of our whole pile of money. Also, that would be so buildings, grounds, improvements and repairs, equipment, buses and vehicles is in there. You may have said that, Teresa, I might have missed it. The tech computers, the non-instructional software, so the software that runs a business office, things like that. And then I think you said leases, so just to make sure we cover all of that.
Any other question or questions, Ryan?
Did you make a motion?
He did make a motion, and Gary, and Jim.
Jim was seconded, yeah.
So all those in favor of going with the increase, we put it on the ballot per vote for pebble from the current 67 to $1? I take the five by saying aye.
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 All those same sign? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we are going to move on to sharing cross-country with Clarion Goldfield Dows. Chris, do you want to start with that? And I see that James Severs is here, maybe he wants to add something to that too, or if you want to let him off first?
You know, James, do you want to share anything?
Sure.
I'm sure that, and then the bullet points, some of the ones that I said before, I'll let James speak to some of that, because we did touch it.
Yeah, so I think sharing cross-country is a unique position for us. We've shown kind of through other sports and sharing, that's been a good fit. Soccer's been a really good fit for us. Even for us going to Clarion for wrestling, I know that was a kind of upheaval slide and caused a lot of issues and rifts between family and friends. But that has worked out for us as well, it's been positive. And so, you know, next year, kind of looking at numbers in terms of just where we're at. Initially, we kind of talked about 10 or 11 boys being out for cross-country. That number has now been kind of more cut in half. We have a couple of kids that transferred over to the football program, so their numbers look better. We have a couple of kids that transferred out from last year's team, so they're sitting more at the five or six mark. Girls, we're going to be right at about six, five or six, if we can get an eighth grader out or so. And so that's where we're at. We don't have abundant numbers of teams, kids going out for cross-country. It is a pretty tough split, so it's meant all those kids that go out for it. So, but Clarion's going to bring over five kids at the most. It's going to mostly end up in the, on the boys category. I don't think they have any girls lined up yet. If they would, they'd be freshmen that they don't know about yet. If, you know, if we, if Clarion decides to end their program, we would, and we still put them on, we would still run a class period. And wrestling was brought up about, you know, that in terms of numbers. We went over, Clarion takes on our numbers for wrestling. There's only three classes in wrestling, and so we stayed within two-way wrestling. We just went from the bottom to the top of two-way wrestling. And so for us, we, you know, for cross-country, we're going to jump up a little bit in terms of time. But it only impacts one race out of the year, that's the state qualifying meet. Everybody else, all the other meets are the exact same, nothing changes on that end. So, is there any questions? Yep.
So you said, go back to wrestling. Had we not dissolved, our kids still could have went there, and their numbers didn't affect, I mean, they still affect our enrollment.
Yep.
So we did that for nothing.
I don't want to say we did it for nothing, but we did that, and the state, there was kind of a, maybe a misnomer out there that during COVID, you could go, if your school didn't offer a program, you could have gone anywhere. And that school did not have to take on those numbers at that time.
That's unfortunate.
That is no longer the case. If we don't have swimming, for example, and we go to Mason City, Mason City takes on our numbers.
So we're going to take on their numbers regardless.
Yep, we are. So the class, the class period thing only impacts one race, and that's the state qualifying meet. Otherwise, it impacts all the races.
So let me get this so perfectly clear. If we say, no, we don't want to share tonight?
Yep.
And they don't have the program?
And they would turn around and dissolve it, then it'd be, they could choose the school that they would want to go to.
They could go to any place.
They could go anywhere, they could go South Eagle, or they could come here.
But who's going to pick up their numbers?
Whoever takes them on. So it'd be either us or whichever school they find.
So if they went to Eagle Grove or.
Campbell.
Campbell, towards our district. They could have Hamilton.
Those numbers would all be, even though they're only bringing a few kids.
I understand.
We absorbed the.
If they figure out how many kids, let's say, three kids went to one school and two went to another school.
Can't do that.
Can't do that, yeah.
Well, they all have to go to the same place.
They all have to go to the same place, yep, so.
So they don't have a choice.
That's what happened with wrestling.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, we all had to go to Clarion, I did remember that.
Yeah.
And we had a pretty good season there, and certainly the soccer thing is picking up big time.
I think we built a pretty good bridge with Clarion, and, you know, I would be a little bit more hesitant if we were going over there, you know? I would hate to send our kids over there and have them travel 20 minutes for breakfast, but, you know, on the other side, they're coming here.
But we got more kids out.
Yeah.
Certainly more girls and more boys.
We have more kids, we, you know, I think our program has been historically much better. You know, I think Ethan Albertson's pretty excited about the advent of having a few more kids come out there. You know, then that way we can have that team atmosphere for boys and girls.
So that's your recommendation?
I would like to share, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for James?
I got one.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you can hear me.
Okay, James, so if we share, obviously the cost would be somewhat, Clarion will base on the cost, correct?
Cost, I guess in terms of.
They'll probably help with travel and stuff. I mean, that's the way most of the other sharing has gone, where you kind of divide whether or not they use their bus one time or whatever, but most of our other sharings have been done, it's been kind of done that way.
So what happens with that is we would have to have a formal signed sharing agreement, and then we do lay those terms out directly in that contract. Just based off of experience, what we've done in the past, the costs of like coaching supplies, that sort of things, we typically divvy that out proportional to the number of students participating. And then usually, like, the transportation is up to the district where the students are coming from. So we would need to put all of those terms into the contract, but that is what I would anticipate we would do.
Okay, that's what I, that's basically what I was trying to get at, that would happen. So that's if we share. So if we don't share, they dissolve their program, and we end up, they decide to go to Belmont, so how much money is Clarion going to put into this program then for the cross-country?
There would be no dollars.
No money at all.
So no help with coaching, no extra people on the field to help motivate everybody? I'm a firm believer, especially in sports, the more athletes you can have, the better it helps the better ones. It helps our top athletes get better, and it helps our weaker athletes even get better because they have to push themselves harder to do better. So, I mean, just going up in numbers, it's a good thing. So that's, but I just wanted to point that out, that if we share with them, the cost will be somewhat, you know, they'll still have to pay some of the money for, we're not taking on all the cost. But if we don't share with them, and they decide to come here, then we take on all the cost even for those extra athletes.
And if I could just clarify one more piece too. So when we talk about disbanding versus the sharing, I think that whole thing has been just a little bit of, there's been some confusion there. So when it came to COVID, if you disbanded completely, then you could send your kids elsewhere. And so after COVID was over and we started talking about sharing sports, we thought we could do that. You can't. So it's not that we disbanded anything for no reason, it's that it turned out that either option was exactly the same thing. So at the time, that's what we thought we had to do, and then we realized the state kind of called them, or we called them and they said, no, 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 that was special for COVID, it's over. You either, you share or you have your own.
Well, we, at that time, yeah, we tried to share, then it wasn't, because they thought we were going to affect their numbers.
Right, correct.
And we thought we did what was best for the kids. So, you know, what's best for the kids in this situation? That's what we got to look at.
Right. Any other input or thoughts, James?
Do you have any? I did think, so I think the only other, just in my fact-finding, and we weren't new to this, but was this situation? Not the sharing and all of that, I've had that experience, but just knowing that Clarion has already approved for them to come here, so that would be their intent and their hope. And in terms of submissions to the state, we have to submit that so that they know intent and that kind of thing. So all of those steps have been made. James did a great job following, Paul McCord called it, he made the decision. So that's, what's left is to make the decision.
Need some kind of a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion that we share.
Ryan made a motion that we share.
I'll sign it.
Rick, second that. Open up 30 more discussion. Gary's pondering, I can see it.
I hope that if we decide to go ahead and approve the sharing agreement, that it will be in the spirit that it's intended, and that is that every kid will have a better opportunity to participate. Whether or not we're in 1A, 3A, it may not make any difference at all if they simply abandon their program and the kids come over here anyway. That may be the rub, and we get no money besides. To me, it isn't just a financial thing. I just think that we have made such great inroads, both with the baseball program. We left for two years, and we went to Eagle Grove, and we came back and said, we can do better because we've got more kids here, and it's been a good thing. Our kids didn't win very many games, but by gosh, we got some great kids coming up in the ranks. I mean, I'm seeing that. And then we had the wrestling piece. We had some good success from our kids that finally had a program that was large enough to compete on this bigger stage, and we got that, we got that going. I just think the rapport, the relationships that we have with the surrounding districts almost is surmounting some other kinds of issues about who do we have to compete against? That's my feeling. And that's, I think, what's best for my kids.
The only thing I would add, in the spirit of opportunity, when we look at the conditions for survey and how kids are feeling and that great need, whether there are kids, whoever's kids, that feeling of belonging and being a part of a team, it does make a difference. And if we're wanting other opportunities in the future, it might be us, so needing some help.
We might need some help, yeah, that could be another program, yeah. Look at our esports, I mean, people want to be part of our esports team, because we've got a good program. They don't have much to offer. Okay.
Ryan?
Well, we also had some families here today to advocate against it.
Yes, I know, I heard that, I heard them very loudly and clearly. I know almost every one of them.
We have athletic director of sport, though.
And I spoke with James yesterday, what were the numbers you gave me again, just quick without for the boys with the state? What would have been the difference? You said that we would have still had someone go to state, it was just time difference.
So, Isaac Swenson's time last year was 1725, or 1721. He finished seventh in class 1A and finished 11th in state qualifying. To
Tony's still with the gun to state, too.
He's in 3A.
Yep.
Because they take the top fifteen.
Top fifteen.
Fifteen.
Wow, so my relationships are very comfortable.
Yeah.
That we're doing. That's a good point.
Jim, do you have anything to add?
I had a visit with a lady this afternoon. She showed some concerns, and I'm not much of a sports person. I don't keep up with it, I don't care about it, it isn't an interest of mine. But what is important to me is that the kids get the opportunities that they need to have. And her concern was the travel time, and I think that's been pretty much relieved, you know? I don't think one trip is outlandish.
It would actually be closer. The last year, we went to Central Spring, which is about an hour away, and the 3A qualifying meet in Humble.
Oh, we go further than that now.
Yeah, no.
With stuff. So, I don't see the travel being an issue. Competing, what does that put our kids with, with more kids? Competition, that's what it's all about. That's what sports are all about, competition. So, if you're establishing a larger group of people to compete with, in my mind's eye, that's good. You know, competition never bothered me, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't think that this would bother our kids, because that's what it's all about. That's what I have to say about it.
Anything else to add, Rick?
No, no, I agree completely. I think I already said that, no, I don't think a bigger group is better. It causes them to compete against each other more. It drives the top ones to do better and it drives the ones who are still trying to improve to do better, so, yes.
Okay, are we ready to vote then?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. All those in favor of sharing cross-country with Clarion Goldfield Dowes School District, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the last action item is finalizing legislative priorities for the school board.
Vouchers, oh, yeah.
That was on the news tonight.
Yeah, I know.
Did you see that? The numbers?
Yes, and how long it took to fill all those scholarships.
The numbers were almost twice what they thought the numbers were going to be.
In less than 24 hours, they had all of the regular slots filled with people applying for free, for public money to acquire credits.
Twenty-nine thousand, twenty-five kids applied.
Yep.
They expected fourteen thousand, they approved eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-three of those. Okay.
Okay.
Get off that. All right. Do you have anything for, to share with us about that, Chris, or do you want?
You mean about the vouchers?
No.
No.
The priorities.
Oh, the priorities, sorry. Actually, yes, when I, when I look at the priorities that are ISBA's, and I think about, again, our data in and of itself, with some of our areas that are targeted, that we've looked at for this segregated data, as well as when you think of conditions for learning, you know, you are, you're talking about school safety, that money that goes to at-risk dropout prevention money, mental health, all of those pieces, I think align. Also, with the teacher recruitment and licensure, that's a conversation that we were having with the principal team tonight on, you know, how, how do we actively and proactively involve our teachers and even, I've involved students before, and how do we recruit the best to be here in terms of teaching? So, I, I think those are strong, strong, not just for Belmont, but for the state.
Just a couple of quick comments, and I've read through those carefully, and let's look at number 12 and 11 of the ISBA. And I'm going specifically to, and Teresa's going to be angry, but you go to the next to the last bullet point, 11, says use the management fund to offer recruitment incentives to attract high-quality teachers, number one. And then in 12, last, let's see which one, third bullet point, use the management fund to offer retention incentives to maintain high-quality teacher workforce. And back to mental health, same issues.
Right.
Making certain that we have some flexibility in providing funding for those three things.
One of the things we talked about are some programs that are out there in terms of mental health and at-risk. I have a meeting with Central Rivers ADA and have asked and inquired about some school-based interventionist support that is at a fraction of the cost of having a full FTE. Again, just asking about that, that flexibility, those are conversations that, you know, looking very carefully at our, at our budget. Gary, you're right, it's, it's important to figure out how, how to do that and, you know, like, even we talked about strategies, you know, how do we get ahead of the, of that recruiting? How do we, you know, make Belmont an attractive place?
Right.
To want to be so.
That's all I had to say on that.
Anything else? Do you want to finalize our choices, make, they are here on the list, or what do we want to?
Do we need to do that, yep? Until after the election? I wish, I mean, obviously, the ISBA board meeting is going to immediately follow with the election.
We, right, and we need to, they like to have them submitted by Friday, August 11th. So, therefore, it might look us to do it tonight, knowing that
I hear what you're saying.
Right, as we have, if we have new people, continuing to look at other things, knowing that we had to establish, would be my thought.
The last year, our board priorities, just read for your information, was funding, support, funding and support for mental health services in Iowa schools and across the state. Fund all schools on the same per-people amount.
Yeah, I have the agenda all right.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Yep.
I would suggest that we take the existing ones and add to it, from my perspective. We could embellish the mental health one by using number seven from ISBA, but add 11 and 12. How do we, how do we attract teachers and how do we retain them? And, and providing some tools to do that, but more importantly, I know management fund is, is kind of the go-to place, but wisely used, I think it could be used to provide some programs that I have learned about at school board meetings in Des Moines, but we've never been able to get to the point where we said, let's go do that, so.
We also talked about, there's a teacher paralegister apprenticeship grant out there, so I helped write the grant for that in other places. So, I will ask about that with ADA as well. There's, that's money to help people that are either wanting to become a par educator to get their licensure, or becoming to be a teacher. And when you think about even a grow-your-own program and how we're helping people that maybe are already in our system, that would be good teachers that we're already coaching and facilitating, is another option to think about, so there's a lot of options out there.
I went to a breakout session about that at the last school board conference in November about paras.
Yeah.
Using that funding, and then there was a lot of great success with that.
Is there an age limit of being a para?
Eighteen.
No.
No.
Oh, para?
An over, like, at the end of your career. Like, are you too old to be a para?
No, you're never too old to be a para. Gary and Gary.
There you go, Gary. I got a slot.
My new job! Yahoo!
Please leave the desk.
Sorry, I misunderstood you. Actually, I know somebody.
We'd have to approve that, we'd have to abstain from that vote and, yeah. We want to piggybacking with school safety, we want to, just given our, our reports we received tonight, we still want to leave that out of our thought process.
Actually, I, I think we've addressed safety more so than I ever dreamed we had. Rick has the program, I mean, it's been developed and I think it's, we've made our facilities safe. Whether the kids feel safe, that's a different issue, but
Right. And some of that safety, the way that conditions for learning questions are written, may fall more into your dropout at-risk, you know, mental health.
Okay, then that would be that, too.
So, I'm glad you mentioned that. I think that's in the sure.
Okay, so we're going to leave them as they were last year and then add in?
Six, seven, eleven, twelve, fourteen? Or eleven and twelve?
Six, seven, eleven and twelve.
Right.
Michelle, so for our own purposes here, we can have as many as we want, but when we submit this, we're limited since we're your four. So, just so you're aware, whichever are your top, make sure they're, it's four.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, we need to, we need to level the payment for all districts, I think that's important. The fund all schools on the same per-people, this, they've been working on this for
Fifty years.
And they never seem to get it fixed.
I think that could be better replaced, that would be better served if we did the teacher recruitment.
Yeah, we just have more money to deal with.
And I think, you know, the defeat vouchers were there, although we have that feeling we're, it's here, it's here, so.
Move it up, move it up, yeah.
So, we want to replace the, fund all schools on the same per-people amount and the defeat vouchers? Those are two we're looking to replace.
No, 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 I want funding the same.
Okay.
That, that needs to be there.
Replace the defeat vouchers with the teacher enhancement.
Yeah, we can put the rest of those from above as a part of ours.
Yes, we already had the mental health.
But we need to focus on the four we really do want.
Right.
Some of the pieces from 12, certainly as you're addressing 11, can be part of that.
Good point. Yeah, just tie it together, that's a good one. But we'd be still on that with four.
So, let's understand that's, funding and support for mental health services, we're definitely letting it place. The fund all schools on the same per-people amount.
Correct.
Want to replace defeat vouchers with number 11. And then we're going to continue with the
Eleven, twelve.
Right, eleven, twelve combo, and then the dropout at-risk funds, we're going to leave as number four.
Well, we can pick up what they've got up here.
Sure, just six. Sure, just six. Okay.
Is there a specific one on 11 or 12, or even, like, is there a way that we work that to put straight to ISBA when we fill without?
Our school board superintendent is kind of draft that, so it looks super difficult.
Kind of crafting skills.
Crafting.
Creating, creating writing.
She'll mush it together.
So, we need a motion to finalize those choices as our legislative priorities. Jim? Second, Gary? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, that's our final action item. Rick, do you want to stay on the phone for the closed session, or do you want us to call you back, or?
Either way, I can stay on the phone.
Okay, sure. Discussion items, board comments, future agenda planning. Anything?
Are we going to talk at all about when we're going to have a work session?
A retreat?
I like retreats and food.
I have, I, I've been working in my, oh, gosh, it's our P B tomorrow, my weekly update, I put, and retreat is one of my items, and I have some ideas. If, if people have timeframes that they think we should do that, or if you have dates that don't work, you could send them our way to the, to me and we can
I'm not leaving the country until next year, so.
Okay. Would that work with people? If you have one of the dates that just don't work for you?
I think early September, if we can figure out something early September.
Sure.
After school, pitch room.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to talk about it, too. And food, I wanted to mention the food part.
Would the board like to discuss, you know, about
Sure, sure. I, I propose it's 13th.
November meeting.
November 13th, Tuesday. We've done Tuesday before, it seems to work well.
Instead of the 16th, it's Thursday, we do the
Oh, yeah.
Because the conference is, how much is the 15th?
15, which is what day? I mean, it's the middle day.
The 15th is a Wednesday.
Oh, it is. Oh, it'd be, it'd have to be 14th.
Does anybody sign up? And there, I don't
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're thinking like, I've been before.
Possibly.
Well, we did, well, what they did in the past was they
Did you just sign people up without names?
You just had rooms, and then
Council.
That's whatever, yeah.
Just sign up under a, kind of a tax
Right.
Right, yeah.
Does that work?
We did, absolutely, we can do that and, and if that
That makes we can do it 14th. That'd be Tuesday, the 14th of November.
And then we'll just share that information, should, should we be elected, that this is something we would highly recommend.
We would want you to be there for you. It's a good time to have
Absolutely.
Food. And the freebies.
All those cookies, Gary's
There's cookies, fresh cookies, all day.
So, second Tuesday in November?
Second Tuesday in November will be our, that November meeting.
Okay, we need to adjourn before our closed sessions?
I'll leave the phone, kind of stand and close.